Who's attending? Um, let us, as we usually do, start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, um, led by, um, Scott.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands, "Our nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all."
Thank you. Um, just for those who are attending, just a couple of things to remember, please. Um, this broadcast is being recorded, uh, so be aware of that. And also, secondly, um, if you have a question, uh, you will see in your control box, uh, that there is a box that says question, um, please type your question in that box. Um, it is being monitored. Your questions pop up to us and that allows us to see who has questions and be able to respond to them. Um, I know that there's also in the control box, um, a little hand, uh, as if you're raising your hand, but that's much more difficult for us to monitor. So, uh, if you have a question, please, uh, submit your question and then we'll be able to see it. Okay, um, with that, um, the, uh, the purpose of the meeting this morning and our agenda item is to respond to the, um, acts of vandalism, uh, that we have experienced here in our, uh, in Westford over the last couple of weeks, uh, with, which has, um, included the spray painting of, um, anti-Semitic symbols, um, including, uh, the swastika and stars of David, um, as well as, um, uh, uh, language, um, that, uh, uh, certainly, uh, um, uh, is discriminatory, um, and hateful, uh, against, uh, both religion, um, and, and women. So, um, I did, um, uh, circulate, uh, um, a statement, uh, for us to consider, uh, putting out to the community. Um, Eric, I sent it to you last night is, um, can you share it on your screen for us? Ah, there you go. See, look at, look at that. You asked and there, and here it comes. So, um, this is the statement that we have, uh, drafted or, um, that the board, uh, the select board has put together to, um, uh, discuss this morning, um, and to issue, uh, to the community. So, um, uh, if there are from the board members, are there, uh, comments, uh, are there edits? Are there revisions, uh, that, uh, we'd like to make? Uh, we can do that now so that we can finalize this and, um, uh, put our statement out to the community. So, comments from the board?
So, Scott. Well, I guess it's just, um, you know, first, I never thought I'd see the day when I have to do this in Westford. Um, this is appalling that it has happened and I'm glad we're, we're doing this statement. Um, I guess my question is, do we want to add anything at the end? I mean, uh, as I observed with, um, you know, after Joy Floyd, that we don't have a, a single problem with race. We have a problem with hatred, which includes race, as we've seen in our religion, um, but also discrimination against those with, or prejudice against those with, uh, perhaps alters, terms of sexual preferences or disabilities and so forth. So, we have committed to forming this, um, committee for the inclusion and, um, um, spacing on the E. Um, uh, thank you. Um, yeah, and we expect that to come back with some recommendations for us to pursue, either through education or policy or whatnot. We want to make a reference to that here, that, you know, we are going to take some action as a community and not just leave it as, um, you know, where we're angry and upset, but, you know, we also are already involved in doing something and this just proves the need, I think even further for that action.
Okay. Um, I'm, I'm fine with that. Um, if you've got, um, some language, I don't know if you have some, if you thought that far ahead of some language to propose, Scott?
Um, no, but give you, if it was, was to come in, I'll, I'll think for a second.
Okay. Um, Mark?
Yeah, so I agree completely with Scott. Um, this, this is, um, we could call out in this letter and what we did previously, every time we have one of these discussions or meetings, every form of hatred that's out there. The fact is, there's just a lot of hatred and, you know, uh, it's absolutely disgusting. Um, and so calling out what it is in its basic form, irrespective of why, um, I think is what's necessary. So, I would agree with Scott to, um, put a, a little language in here that says it's consistent with whatever we end up trying to do with, uh, that committee. Um, the other thing I would do is at the end of the first sentence where we talk about, where it says anti-Semitic symbols in Westford, um, I would just, if we can, add, and other nearby towns. Um, I think we, this needs to be clear, this isn't an issue just here, um, and nor were these incidents just here. They are in other surrounding, uh, towns. Those are the only two things I would add.
Okay. We can, we can add that at the end of the sentence, um, anti-Semitic in Westford and other surrounding towns. Anita?
Yeah, um, I have two, two comments while we're, um, Scott's also thinking about language. One is whether or not we should add the police department's contact information at the end of that last sentence, just so if people need a reminder of what the phone number is or the anonymous tip line, that it's readily available. And also, um, adding to that sentence that you're already going to be editing, that first sentence of, um, hateful language towards women, if we wanted to add like misogynistic or some other word that might be appropriate, um, there too, so we capture all of that.
Tom?
Um, I'm supportive of all these good comments and, and glad that Scott brought up sort of the action and the follow-up. Um, I think in other, in other cases, unfortunately, in other situations we face like this, uh, I think we've done well by making a commitment to action. So, um, whatever, whatever language, uh, Scott or the rest of us decide to put at the end, that says that we, we intend to make this a focus area for the Diversity Equity Inclusion, uh, Committee, uh, or, or something similar, I think is important.
Okay. Um, Chief McInnany?
Hi.
Oops. I think you're muted, Tom.
I think he's actually frozen. Oh.
Oh, yes, I think.
Andrea, I don't know if you've seen it, you do have a question or two.
Yeah, I, I do. I was just waiting to see if the chief became, uh, unfrozen before I, um, looked at the questions, but it looks like he is frozen right now for a little bit. Um, so while he tries to figure that out, um, let me go to, uh, uh, the question. We have a question. Why are you not calling, why are you not calling this a hate crime? Um, I believe that we are calling this a hate crime. Um, if you look at our statement, we, uh, have said that we, uh, we have referred to it as hateful acts. Um, we do not condemn such hatred, you know, we condemn such acts of hatred in the strongest of terms and rank and remain committed to combating hatred in any form. And, uh, the last sentence, uh, indicates that we urge anyone with information about these acts to contact the Westford Police Department, who continues to investigate these crimes, these incidents as hate crimes. So, um, I, I do believe that, uh, we are, uh, doing, that we are condemning these acts for what they are, which is that they are hate crimes and they are being investigated as hate crimes. Scott, you, um, I lost it. Chief, um, my screen is not showing Chief McInnany right now. Did, um?
He's, he's working on it. Standby.
Okay, I was going to say, um, I, I don't know if he's still here or not because my screen isn't showing him. But meanwhile, Scott, you had your hand up.
Well, you, you actually covered it. As I said, that we actually do reference hate crimes explicitly as part of, or asking to do, investigate. So, you, you covered it.
Okay. Um, so, I think the, um, I can add, um, misogynistic, um, in the first sentence and also in other surrounding towns. Um, we can add the police contact number. And then, uh, the only thing, uh, we're, we're left with is, um, a, a sentence, uh, about, uh, the, uh, DEI, uh, uh, committee that we are working to establish and, um, its purpose. So, um.
So, I've, I've not, I've not put it in writing for the moderator, but, um, I was thinking that, you know, um, the West, the, the Westford Select Board has, has committed to forming a Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee with the task of, um, recommending actions to improve, um, education and, um, I had to say enforcement, it's the wrong word, but, uh, education, I think, for the most education and tolerance of, um, diverse populations in Westford. We, we actually have a charge yet, so that, that's kind of, uh?
Mm-hmm. I know we haven't done our charge yet.
So, I'm, I'm flexible on those, how we phrase that, but?
Okay. Um. All right. Uh, hang on a minute. We've got a bunch of questions here. So, um, let me go to those questions and then we'll come back because I think they may impact upon, uh, what we're trying to draft here. Okay? Um. Uh, we have a question that says, "What specific actions will the select board take to collaboratively partner with neighboring communities that are also affected, uh, by these hate crimes?" Um, I can certainly, um, tell you that, um, uh, our police department, uh, is working closely with neighboring community, uh, with our neighboring communities and investigating, uh, these hate crimes. Um, and certainly as a, a, a select board, um, uh, we can reach out to Chelmsford's, uh, Select Board, which is one of the neighboring communities that's been affected by these hate crimes as well, um, to see, um, you know, to collaborate and share information and work with them. Um. We have a comment that says, "Hi, I feel the statement needs some words missing, word slipping, so that it is stronger. For example, start with a stronger word in each sentence, such as 'we are angry' and then saddened, and also could we truncate some sentences? So, rather than 'we condemn such acts of hatred, blah, blah, blah,' can't we say we condemn, we condemn acts of hatred?" Um. We have a question. Um, "Is there the possibility of making a suggestion that our school curriculum, in particular the high school program, will evaluate their educational components about antisemitism and the Holocaust? I would hope this would be in a comprehensive way to explore the history of other groups that have faced hate and violence in history. For instance, should we be doing more with facing history, facing ourselves?" Um, that's, I think, certainly an excellent question for the, uh, the school committee and, um, the school department. And, um, I believe, um, that as we move forward this year, they too are looking at, uh, uh, diversity, equity, and inclusion, um, uh, issues, including their curriculum. So, um, while I think that's an excellent question, um, is, I think, a question, uh, better addressed to the school committee, uh, and the schools as opposed to, um, uh, us as a select board, although we can certainly, as a select board, if we decide to, um, uh, weigh in, uh, on our opinion, um, uh, and in support of that. Equity, okay. What do we call it instead? Um, there's a suggestion that instead of saying, um, the tolerance, that we say either equity or equality. Um, we have a question. When will the DEI group be put together to actually be able to take action? Uh, well, um, it is again on our, um, August 11th agenda, where at that time, um, I believe the board hopes to, uh, both, um, uh, draft its charge and approve its charge, discuss its membership, and, um, start, uh, the process of, um, uh, asking for, uh, citizen volunteers and, um, uh, members of that committee. So, uh, I would expect that the group would be put together probably by, uh, the end of August. Um, and then just, uh, uh, information, um, Grotton also had an incident in June, that's correct. I think Weston as well with the same names used. Um, and, um, I believe that that is correct, um, and is part of an ongoing investigation. Um, and then just another comment in response to the change of tolerance to equity or qualities. Uh, another individual is saying, "I think equality instead would weaken the statement." So, I believe that's all of the, um, comments that we have so far. Anyway, Chief McInnany, are you back with us?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Um, I think, um, Chief, one of the suggestions was to put the, uh, police contact information at the end of, uh, our statement. I'm gonna assume, um, I, I, I shouldn't assume. Is, is that okay with you and the department?
Yes, that's exactly what we're looking for.
Okay. And, um, what numbers would you like us to use?
So, for the business line, nine seven eight.
Mm-hmm.
Six nine two, two one six one, and they can ask for detectives. And for the tip line, it's nine seven eight, three nine nine, two zero seven two. And anybody can leave an anonymous tip. And we also have that video still up on our, on our account, a website. So, if Pete, we encourage people to look at it and if they can recognize or identify the sus- suspect in that case, uh, please let us know.
Okay.
I think Anita has a question. It looks like Mark does too.
Yep. Anita?
Yeah, I was just trying to see if I could draft something while everyone was talking too, but I just wanted to say that, um, I, I, I know that we want to add the DEI Working Group to the statement and, and that makes sense to me, but I just want to also make sure that we're not going to kind of pigeonhole the deep, like, all of this work into the DEI and the part of this statement, I feel like, is showing leadership across the board, right, um, across the town, right? So, it's not just a DEI issue, it's, you know, something that, uh, a community issue. So, I just, when I'm trying to flesh out what the sentence is, and I know that you've already been drafting a little bit, um, just that we understand that there's going to be more than, more than just the DEI Working Group. So, if it's educational opportunities, if it's, you know, working in some, some sort of partnership with, um, religious institutions or, you know, other organizations in town, so that it's a larger effort, not, um, just specific to DEI, so kind of listing, um, more rather than less. I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Okay. No, I think that's, uh, I, I do think that this is community-wide and, and you're right. We can't just focus this on, and, and basically turn this, uh, issue over to a working group, um, because it is much bigger and broader than that. Um. Let's see. Any other? I'm sorry, Scott?
Well, I'm actually thinking about my statement. Um, if it was keeping track, I would change tolerance to respect because tolerance means you put up with it. That's not what I had in mind. I think respect is a better word. Uh, secondly, I don't know if it was what I mentioned explicitly, the, the ADL, but I know that in the context of, um, you know, race, we had mentioned, working with the ADL as a, uh, advisory group, and this certainly qualifies, I think, as, um, in their wheelhouse. So, maybe want to add that to Anita's comments of, of how we're going to work, work through this as a community.
Okay. So, Anita, were you draft, were you, while we were talking, did you say you were drafting something?
Yeah, so I, I copied it twice accidentally into the chat, but basically I started out a sentence and I just need an ending for it that, um, hopefully someone else can pull up. But what I wrote so far is, "In addition to the statement condemning these acts of hate, we continue to flesh out the charge of the DEI Working Group that will foster inclusivity, gather educational recommendations from the community," and something else to kind of close it out. I don't know what that last part is, but, um, I saw Mark's hand goes up too.
Yep, Mark?
Yeah, I'd like to actually see this up on, uh, the screen as opposed to in the chat once we get done with it. I'm starting to feel like this thing is getting watered down. Um, and, you know, th- this is, um, should be a very simple statement of, um, of, um, hate in general. Um, and no working group is going to, um, fix all this. I think it's, that, you know, I'm glad we're forming one and I think it's necessary, but, um, state, you know, acts and statements and continuing to call people out is necessary. So, the more this gets watered down and gets longer and everything else, the less impact it has to me personally. Um, so I just need to see what it's saying in total before, um, I'm willing to sign off on anything.
Okay, so, um, Eric, I know you're in the background there. Um, can you, um, edit this? Do you have the ability to edit this statement as we're talking?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, um, and maybe put the edits in red so that, uh, uh, we can follow along? So, um, the first one is, in the first sentence, um, uh, after involving the spray painting of antisemitic and then add, "And misogynic, misogynistic," no, actually, I'm sorry, antisemitic symbols. And?
God.
Misogynistic language.
M-I-S-O?
M-I-S-O.
Um.
G-Y-N.
Edit?
Yep.
Was there another part? Andrea?
Language.
Language.
"In Westford and surrounding communities." S-U, oh, there you go. But if we say surrounding towns, really like small words. Um, "The select board is saddened and angered that such hateful acts have occurred in our community, expressions of hate." Okay, then we go down to, um, the Westford Police Department, who continue to investigate. Um, "We urge anyone, um, who, blah, blah, continue it as hate crimes." Uh. The Westford Police Department can be contacted at, actually, um, at nine seven eight. Actually, um, the first one is nine seven eight, six nine two, two one six one.
Two one six one?
Yep.
Okay.
Or? The tip line.
Is it?
Comma. Comma, nine seven eight, I'm sorry, yeah, nine seven eight, three nine nine, two oh seven two. And then, just for discussion purposes, can you take what Anita typed in the chat box and paste it here?
Yeah, just give me just a second.
Okay.
Tom has his hand up. I'm waiting.
I, I see that, but before I get to you, Tom, we have a, a bunch of questions and comments I just want to get to, if that's okay?
Sure.
Hang on a minute. Um, could you post this on several social media boards in Westford and not just the police page? Yes, that is our intent, uh, at the end of that, of this, is to issue this statement. Um, uh, and it will be posted on, um, various social media, um, outlets. Um, it would be great to give a pointer to that video somewhere at the end. Uh, there's a suggestion, "In general, use more action words in simpler sentences, such as 'we condemn hatred acts, we commit to combating hatred,'" just the suggestions. Um, "What kind of accountability can we be expect from the police department?" Um. We'll get back to that one. Um. Any kind of, any crime, okay, "Any crime motivated by bigotry or bias is part of the definitions." Um. Thank you. Um, "You may want to include the idea of belonging, foster respect, tolerance in a sense of belonging." Um, and then there is a comment that, um, says, "I agree with Mark," and I assume that that means about watering down the statement. Um, "In terms of accountability from the police, Tom, um, I'm, I'm not sure what the questioner means, but I guess, um, I'll rephrase the question and if it's not what, uh, um, she, uh, she means or he means, um, then I'm sure the questioner will tell me that. But, um, I guess, uh, from me rephrasing it is, uh, at some point in time, uh, when it is appropriate, um, will the police, uh, uh, issue, um, or let us know, uh, what is going on with the investigation and any, um, uh, updates or results from the investigation?"
Yeah, absolutely. We've, uh, we keep the town manager apprised of all of that and, uh, I believe she will fill you in, but this is an active investigation. We are trying to identify somebody. We are in the process of doing interviews, working with other departments. And to Scott's point, uh, we have included the, uh, ADL, uh, and we're in talks with them and they have actually offered, uh, the possibility of issuing a reward, uh, with any information that leads to the prosecution. So, we're doing, uh, a lot with this investigation and we're working with both, uh, our state and local partners on this. And as far as accountability, um, this, it, this is just, we're going to do our job, uh, and we are going to do what we need to do to, uh, get this job done. Uh, I will commit the offices and the resources to doing this job. Um, and I hope the public has trust in us to, uh, investigate this. But as far as, we're just, we're going to do our job.
Thank you. Um, and Tom, I'm back, Tom Clay, I'm back to you because I know you had your hand up and I've forgotten about you.
Well, I was wondering, is a suggestion, and I think you have the same suggestion, Andrea, in one of the questions at the end, uh, if we want to leave this, the action statement a little bit more general and shorter, um, and, and then maybe in our agenda item, uh, we're going to add an agenda item for next week. I'd be interested both in how we'll incorporate this in the Working Group DI, but I'm also interested in what other towns have done when they have faced similar challenges. So, I think, I, I, I'd be very interested in having a discussion that's a little bit broader about how we could address this as a community. But with regard to the statement, I think it might be better. But with regard to the statement, I think it might be better to keep, keep the action list, uh, short, just because I think it could creep into something very, very long if we're trying to, on the fly, you know, describe what actions we want to take as a community here.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think you're right, I think everybody's right, we're, we're starting to lose the, um, impact of this, Mark?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I would end it right after the Westford Police Department contact information and be done with it.
Right, um, okay, the, the one, um, uh, uh, seems that, um,
Sorry, Andrea, there was one other thing I, I wanted to say, which was, um, we have no idea whether this person is a resident of Westford or not.
Right.
So, um, you know, as, I, what this now, uh, references, it just kind of, it, and it doesn't make an inference either way, but as we continue to add stuff to it, I think it starts to, imply certain things, or could infer certain things, that we have no idea whether are true or not. I'm not suggesting that these, uh, that they're, these feelings don't exist in town, which is unfortunate. Um, but I think, again, just making it simple, you know, um, you know, we're angered, I'd actually put angered before saddened, um, but-
I, I would suggest that we do that, is that one of the common themes and suggestions we're getting from, um, uh, uh, the folks who are watching this, is to switch, uh, is to put, uh, angered, the, the select board is angered and saddened, so put angry first.
Yeah, but if, think if we can cut it off after the police stuff, I think we've, you know, this is, you know, sets the right tone, you know, doesn't, you know, we don't even know where we're going with that, with that group at this point in time, so, um, I just think it's, it's impactful, just as is, and be done.
Okay.
That's fine with me.
Okay. I'm just looking at, bear with me for a minute, I'm just looking at, uh, the rest of the comments, uh, that we may have. The other thing, um, is, uh, the suggestion, I think, that we should, um, before tip, we should put anonymous tip lines, so that people do know that it is anonymous. Okay, so, Eric, can you delete now the last part, thank you? Okay, so, for the board, um, um, hang up, whoops. And we have a question, um, what is DEI? And, uh, DEI is, uh, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, uh, Committee, that the Select Board has been discussing, uh, formulating, um, and establishing, uh, within, uh, within the town, and that we will be following up on it, our August 11th meeting, in terms of both, uh, establishing a mission statement for it, uh, as well as membership. Um, okay, so, this, for the board, this, um, any comments, uh, about, uh, the statement as it's written now? Um, Jody?
So just, um, not really important, but I, I think it would read better if we changed the Westford Police Department can to may.
Okay.
I like that better, and then I would probably remove the, um, comma after tip line, at, and to put an at just consistent with above, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, um, it would be my suggestion and my proposal that, uh, once, uh, the board approves this, um, that we, um, uh, get it up on, on the town website, that we get it up on the Select Board's, uh, in- in- individual page, that we send it to Westford Cat for them to publish, that, um, I believe, Jody, we had an inquiry from the reporter, from, uh, the Eagle Independent, that we send it to them, that we send it to the Lowell Sun, um, I would, um, uh, Tom, we send it to, uh, westfordjustice.org so that they can put it up on their website as well. And anybody else have any other, um, suggestions as to where it can be, um, posted? Jody?
I think Scott had his hand up first, but then I think we should put, uh, what we're calling the statement, I think we should have a title on it too.
That would be a good idea. Thank you. Um, Scott?
Well, I just want to say two things, one is, we know we're not back to where, which is, we aren't actually indicating what, 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 what we're going to do, which I guess is okay, because that seems to be the will of the board. But what I would add is, well, you know, when I first saw this, I, I, I've angered, because my first action was to get upset, um, and saddened is, is second, but, um, you know, with time, Westford, I think, good news, if you will, is to see the outpouring on social media of, of community anger, and yet support for the victims, to the point of, um, where, when mailbox destroyed, other resident buys a mailbox for them, some residents, including a couple of, of, of our police, um, you know, saw the mailbox for them, so, while we have certainly a issue of hatred in the community, there is a lot of love, I don't want, I don't want to have this thing end with, um, in pairs of Westford being, you know, angry, Westford actually is, I think, you know, coming around to support these people who've been, uh, victimized by this individual or individuals.
Um, I guess, uh, Mark, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, Scott, I, I mean, I agree with you, but I don't think this statement says anything to that effect at all. So I'm not quite sure.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not making any criticism of the statement, I'm just saying that, that in addition to this incident, as a community, we have, I think, I just wanted to make the statement, or make the personal observation, that in the, in the rain cloud, there was a bit of sunshine, it has nothing to do with, um, what should be included here, just a matter of saying-
I think that's, I think that's true of, of, of everything, 95% and above, and what goes on in this community is fantastic. Unfortunately, it never gets talked about. And, um, so the same is true, um, with everything we've been dealing with, uh, the last few months. So, I, and so I agree, but people don't want to hear about it, unfortunately.
Yeah, um, I, I think that, you know, I, I, I agree with Mark, I mean, and, and Scott, I hear what you're saying, but I, I think that the, the purpose of this statement is, is, you know, condemnation, uh, uh, of the hate, crimes and acts and destruction of property and spray painting that's been going on over the last couple of weeks, and I think that that really has to be the focus, um, of, um, that has to be the focus of this statement. So. Mm-hmm. Um, so any other, um, any other comments, uh, from the board, or any other suggestions or edits from the board? Anita?
Yeah, um, just, I, I wasn't scribbling down the different outlets that we wanted to circulate this to, but, and I don't have a high schooler, but, um, does the WA Ghostwriter still meet over the summer? I wonder if that might be an option, um, that we could circulate to, because that's a different audience.
I don't know the answer to that question, um, but we can certainly, um, we can certainly circulate this, you know, to, um, uh, the schools, and ask, uh, ask them to put it up on, on the school website as well. Okay. I'm just looking at the final comments. Ah, another, um, actually, there is a suggestion, uh, as another place we, uh, should circulate this to, which is the Westford Coalition for Change. So, um, uh, we should, um, uh, send it to that group as well, and then I think Anita, that, that, um, I think that gets to a, a group of, uh, folks, um, that you were thinking about, who we hadn't covered in the list of, um, lists that I, I suggested. So, um, let's add that one as well. Okay, thank you for the suggestion.
Andrea, you ready for a motion?
I, um-
Well, we still need a title.
I, my motion will include allowing Andrea and the town manager to put a title on it. I don't think I need to spend time deciding what, uh, what title needs to go on top of this.
Okay, yes, Mark, if you're ready to make a motion.
Yeah, so make a motion to, um, approve this, uh, statement as written.
Okay, and giving Jody and I the authority to title it?
You have the grand authority, yes.
Oh, the power. Is there a second?
Second.
Um, any further discussion from the board? Um, okay, seeing none, um, Tom?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Anita?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, we will, uh, get this in final form, Jody and I will come up with a title, we will circulate it to the various groups, um, that we've named, and the various social media, uh, that we've, um, delineated, uh, this morning, uh, later today, actually, as soon as we get this done. Um, and, um, we will, um, continue and make, as, as Tom, um, uh, Clay suggested, uh, this a part of our overall discussion when we're talking about the, uh, Diversity, uh, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, uh, at our meeting, uh, next Tuesday. Um, for all of you who, who have joined us this morning, thank you very much for joining us, thank you for all your comments and your suggestions. Um, it is greatly appreciated, um, uh, the Select Board, um, as I hope, uh, you all have, um, uh, come to realize and, uh, understand, you know, are angry about this, want to make sure that as leaders of our community, we make our anger, um, known, and, um, are feeling that, um, this, these acts just will not be tolerated in, in Westford. So, with that, um, thank you all, uh, good morning, everybody stay safe, um, and have a good day.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? All those, all those in favor, raise your hands. Thank you, everyone have a good day and stay safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In Westford, so with that, um, thank you all, uh, good morning, everybody stay safe, um, and have a good day.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? All those, all those in favor, raise your hands. Thank you, everyone have a good day and stay safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In Westford, so with that, um, thank you all, uh, good morning, everybody stay safe.